All right, this is the Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee. We're here for Council Bill 21-0112, Charter Amendment Supplementary Criminal Apprehension and Conviction Fund. We've already held one hearing on this and taken public testimony. I'm Eric Castello, Councilman for the 11th District, Chair of the Committee. Joining us is Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District Member of the Committee, Councilman Ryan Dorsey, 3rd District Member of the Committee, Council Vice President Sharon Green Middleton, 6th District Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Danielle McCray, 2nd District Member of the Committee, Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District Member of the Committee, Councilman Isaac Kitzey Schleifer, 5th District Member of the Committee, on behalf of Mayor Brandon Scott, Xenia Themelis, and Sophia Gebrywoe, did I get that right?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. On behalf of Council President Nick Mosby is Nikki Thompson. We also have Marguerite Curran, who's staff to the Committee. I think that covers all the members and staff from the Mayor's and the President's office. Colleagues, first order of business is going to be consideration of an amendment. I'm going to turn it over to Councilman Schleifer in one second, but there was an amendment that was sent out via email yesterday, Monday, December 13th at 4:19 PM by Marguerite Curran. This is an amendment that was worked out between Councilman Schleifer and the Law Department. Councilman, I'll turn it over to you and then we'll go to Mr. Pietra to add anything on the amendment.
Okay, are we just speaking to the amendment or would you like me to speak on the bill as well?
Just the amendment.
Okay, so the amendment is the amendment that was sent to all of you. This is an amendment that was approved by the Law Department prior to last hearing that we can just vote through now if that's possible with you, Mr. Chair. Basically removes one of the lines that talks about where proceeds come from. So proceeds and fines, fees, surcharges, and other revenues dedicated. So it would be removing that and a couple other technical changes in the amendment.
Thank you, Mr. Pietra.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, I'm Lena Pietra from the Law Department. The Councilman characterized our agreement well. The amendment is just for the purpose of keeping the budget process intact, basically. So by making it clear how appropriations can be made to this fund.
And this amendment satisfies the concerns that you raised in the agency comments letter?
Yes, it does.
Thank you. Colleagues, is there a motion to move the amendment?
I'd like to move the amendment.
Motion by Schleifer, is there a second?
Second.
Count for Stokes.
Second by, I'm not sure, but there were multiple seconds, so that will work. We'll do roll call, Castello's, yes, Burnett?
Yes.
Dorsey?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Middleton?
Yes.
Schleifer?
Yes.
Okay, this amendment passes 7 to 0. Councilman Schleifer, I understand that you wanted to discuss the bill in general and you also have, I believe, Mr. Miller for the Metro Crime Stoppers Fund. So I'm going to turn it over to you. You and Mr. Miller can present and then we'll open up the floor for questions from our colleagues.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. So yes, just to give a quick overview on this bill and thank you for holding this second hearing on it. This bill is to supplement rewards for information that leads to the arrest and conviction of people who are committing shootings and homicides in the city. What neighborhood you live in should not determine what your reward amount is. And what we've seen across the city is a tremendous inequity on how much a reward is based on what neighborhood it happens in or based on if the governor sees your case on the news or not. And so what we need to be doing is making sure that anybody who is killed or shot on the streets of Baltimore has a fair chance of getting closure in their case. Their family gets the closure, they get the closure, and those cases get resolved. And that is how crime will be reduced in the city by those who are committing these violent crimes by holding them accountable. And so right now, we spend a tremendous amount of time and money on investigating these cases. Our detectives that do a tremendous job are spread very thin. Their caseload is far more than the national average and pretty much any jurisdiction in the state. And this fund will help those detectives solve those cases quicker, more efficiently. It will cut down on overtime hours and it will just simply help increase our clearance rate. Right now, you have a greater than 50% chance of getting away with murder in Baltimore City, on a 75% chance of getting away with shooting somebody in the city. And those numbers are unacceptable and cannot continue. And so I thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the Committee for entertaining this bill and discussing it further. Earl Winterlink, who is the head of Metro Crime Stoppers, is having technical difficulties. He's still trying to get on. If he gets on, I will introduce him. But in the meantime, he has Lee Miller, who has agreed to step in last minute to speak on their behalf. So Lee, if you can just tell us a little bit more about Metro Crime Stoppers and then any members of the Committee who have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name's Lee Miller, thank you for inviting us to attend. I'm the Secretary for Metro Crime Stoppers. Metro Crime Stoppers is an all-volunteer organization that is specifically set up to perform three functions. We are incorporated and insured, and we're a nonprofit organization. The first thing we do is we run the hot tip line for the police. This is an anonymous system that people can make tips either through the website, through tip, a mobile app, or through going onto an application called P3. These tips, because of how they're funneled outside the country and then back into the country, are non-fracing. The only way that we can contact a tipster is by way of a number that we assign them. And then the police do have the ability to send emails back through the P3 system to these tipsters to get additional information. When a tip comes in, we funnel it to the appropriate jurisdiction. We service all the jurisdictions in the greater metropolitan area. There are other crime stopper organizations other than Metro Crime Stoppers in Maryland. But they handle specific counties such as Montgomery County or Prince George's County. The second thing we do is for tips that lead to an arrest and an indictment, we offer a reward. These rewards are based on a point rating system that is embedded in the P3 program. The P3 program is the program we procure. And then we set up the tip reward program. The police council, which is a composition of police members from the jurisdictions, have selected this reward format. We can adjust it. And it determines the reward payout based on the points, of which the maximum amount would be about $2,000 for a murder with multiple arrests and guns involved, things like that. And then we offer these rewards through the P3 system. The tipster has to check in and claim the reward. Frequently, they do not. And the reason they do not is because generally they're afraid. It's our opinion. They're primarily interested in helping solve the crime. So approximately 50% of the rewards are claimed after the fact. So we pay the rewards out anonymously. The third thing we do is we maintain a system of escrow accounts. These are for private rewards that individuals, loved ones, or relatives, things like that, of a victim want to post. And there's no other mechanism to do that within the system right now. So we provide that mechanism for people to post private rewards. And then we do raise funds. We raise funds to pay the rewards and/or advertise for the system. Those are our main functions. Anybody have any questions?
Colleagues?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Dorsey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Miller, did I hear you correctly? You said that the maximum reward is generally about $2,000?
That's correct. But Metro Crime Stoppers itself is self-funded. We raise all the funds that we get. Primarily, we do this from fundraisers such as a bowl, an Oyster Roast, or in the past, we sponsor golf tournaments. And we do get some donations. It used to be, and I'm going to say going back 10 to 20 years, we received a lot of donations from corporations. Those have kind of dried up as the corporations have changed their focus. And so we've gone more to trying to raise our own money. So that kind of limits how much we can pay. Now, within the city of Baltimore, the city itself, about a year ago, began an initiative under Mayor Brown to increase these rewards for murders within the city. And this has been carried on through Mayor Scott's office and it's almost reached fulfillment in which they're going to provide an additional $100,000 in rewards for us to manage. And they're increasing each reward in addition to what Metro Crime Stoppers pays. It would be an increase of $4,000 for a homicide, a flat rate for rewards for homicides. So we would be advertising homicides with a reward of $6,000. If a homicide was also armed, a gun firearm, an illegal firearm, the potential would be to raise it another $2,000.
So that, I'm sorry, can you clarify that for me? So a homicide committed with a gun would be 4,000 plus 2,000? Plus what Metro Crime Stoppers already raises, so 8,000?
Yes. If the firearm was confiscated in the arrest, yes.
Oh, if the firearm was confiscated in the arrest.
Not frequently, I would say about 50% of the time in an arrest that involves a murder that was committed by a gun, by the time the arrest occurs, the gun is not found, so.
And is there, and you also said that only 50% of the rewards ever go claimed by the people who made the tips that are entitled to that reward, that would be able to receive that reward? Is there like a dollar threshold at which we see a greater rate of claim of those rewards that people are entitled to? Like, do people, even greater rewards actually come forth and get that money at a greater rate?
I would say no. I think it depends on how great a risk the individuals feel they're in in claiming it coming forward. There's a certain amount of fear that their name would come out.
And is there a greater, is there a threshold at which people, at which successful tips are made at a greater rate? Does that question make sense?
I understand what you're going, if we raised, let's say we raised it to $25,000, would that result in more tips? My opinion is yes. Right now, with the maximum amount that we can handle on our own, which is up to $2,000, it doesn't really move the scale enough for people to risk their lives.
So if, I mean, okay, I guess.
Can I add something to that?
I'm sorry, I'm just almost finished here. The, so it sounds to me like, like there's a serious issue related to witness protection that, but that's just about, I mean, if the issue is fear, if we think that people might create tips at a greater rate or success rate, because honestly, I don't care if they actually come back and claim the money after the fact. If this is really about getting tips that help to lead to solving murders, it's speculation, it seems like, to think that more money is going to motivate more tips. But certainly, it seems that greater protection for potential witnesses would go toward bringing in more tips. Does this bill provide witness protection?
We go to Councilman Schleifer for a moment?
Yeah, thank you very much, Chairman. So a couple things. Number one, as far as like the witness protection, I understand the importance of that piece. This system is completely anonymous. I've been asked by somebody who once had information on an incident, asked, is this truly anonymous? And what I've found is that most people are not fully aware of how this process and this program works. I personally have learned a lot more about this program in the course of this legislation, finding out how deeply anonymous it is. And so this is very different. You know, how when you call in, they're not gathering your information. There's no way for them to know who it is, even if they wanted to get the information. It's you as the person calling in who has to follow up. And even when the money's paid out, they don't know the person's personal information, who they're paying it to. And so this whole process, as anonymous as it comes, but what we find is that when the rewards have been so low, people aren't even bothering engaging in the process. When you have a five-digit reward, so essentially $10,000 or more, more people are coming forward. And if I could also just ask, if I could ask Earl to speak on what some other jurisdictions in the state are doing through Metro Crime Stoppers, I think it would be helpful for the Committee to hear that, to understand the difference between a $2,000 reward and a $25,000 reward. So Earl, are you able to speak to that?
Yes, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. And I apologize, everybody, for joining on later, had some computer issues. My computer from work broke down and this one finally got up and running. So apologize in advance. And thank you first and foremost for inviting us to participate in this discussion in regards, in the hopes to increase the reward amounts. But I want to do some clarity first. We were talking earlier, and where I'd heard earlier conversations in regards to, a question was posed in regards to did Baltimore City give us $100,000 to $200,000 before? And what did we do with it? We never got $100,000 to $200,000 from Baltimore City. We received a, what they called the Baltimore Gun Bounty Program over five years ago, where we had one of our board members that was on, worked for the city, and he proposed to help us get the rewards amounts increased for crimes within the city that involve guns. It was by no means a gun buyback program in any way. The program was about adding additional reward money for violent crimes where guns were used in that type of a crime. And the way it worked for that is this Metro Crime Stoppers offers up to $2,000 cash reward for information that leads to the arrest and charges filed in all felony cases. The city came on up and gave us the additional money. $5,000 went towards advertisement. And so when you look at the Baltimore homicide van that goes out to the crime scene, you see the rapids around the van. That advertised a gun bounty as well as, you know, the number for Metro Crime Stoppers to call in the anonymous tips. That was a four-year program and it expired. And the money technically rolled over to our operating account. We kept it separate. We had two separate accounts through Metro Crime Stoppers, a regular operating account, and we had the Baltimore Gun Bounty. Remember this, we don't only handle Baltimore City. We are multi-jurisdictions for Metro Crime Stoppers. We cover Baltimore County, Carroll County, Hartford County, Queen Anne's County, Annapolis City, Baltimore City as part of our program, and now also Frederick City. So with that gun bounty, we put a separate account. So only it was in Baltimore City when it was a homicide that was involved or a shooting involved, whereas a gun was used in the shooting, I mean, in the homicide or the non-fatal type of crime. And the way it took place is that we would authorize then, and just as you see now in all of our advertisements, whenever there's a homicide within the city, we offer a cash reward up to $4,000, as long as it's been a gun involved. If it was a homicide where it was a knife involved, it wasn't the extra 2,000 that came in as part of the Baltimore Gun Bounty program. So that's the money that we did get from the city and that was to increase the rewards in cases where guns were involved in Baltimore City only. We still have, I think, if I'm not mistaken, you know, bear with me a little bit because I don't have my other computer that has all my notes on it. But at the same time, I think we're still sitting around $45,000 that is in that account for, they rolled over to our operating account for to increase those rewards up to 4,000. The, there's another thing that's out there and, Councilman, do you want to talk about the other program, that month's agreement?
Yeah, no, you don't need to get into like every specific program. I mean, that's a new program that the Mayor's committed to and we applaud the Mayor for recognizing the importance of increasing rewards. If you can just talk about some of the other jurisdictions in Maryland, like I think it's like Prince George's County and some others that have, that you guys work with, if you can talk about that a little bit.
Yes, in Prince George's County of Maryland, they get money through asset forfeiture. All of their homicide cases automatically advertise for a cash reward of $25,000. Now, I don't know how they do it in their particular case because I want to caution everybody is, anything that we paid out, pay out that's $10,000 or more, we have to follow the laws of the Patriot Act. So we will not allow a person, I mean, a person would not be anonymous if it is more than $10,000 because that information has to be, you know, put forth through the federal government that we paid cash out to one person of $10,000 or more. There's a bill by Judge Richard Carter out in Texas trying to get that pushed on through so a crime stopper type of programs can be exempt on that type of payout. But currently, right now, we do not pay out more than $10,000 for any reward because it would, again, the identity of the tipster would be, would have to be disclosed. And we don't want to do that in any way. Once you take away a program that has anonymous tips coming in through the program, then, and they see that their name's going to be disposed and so forth like that out there, there's less likely we're going to get tips. I heard also earlier, there's other programs that are out there. Some programs that, a lot of the crime stopper programs is $1,000 cash reward and they're smaller programs. We have some programs that are out there, like Texas and Florida, they get all kinds of money and they're doing everything through advertisement. And their success rate is very high on tips and solving crimes based off of the amounts of money that they get into the program, especially the awareness, the, you know, they take billboards out, you know, pay several thousand dollars. They have a bus wraps and all that stuff. Our program, we can't afford that. We can't afford to do the advertisement that we needed to be able to do properly. Excuse me again, my throat is just clogged up through this cold. The, what else would you like me to talk about, Councilman?
No, you can also talk about, just like as far, I know, thank you for mentioning the other jurisdictions you guys work in. You know, what percentage of the work that you guys do in the state of Maryland is in Baltimore City?
I'd say in the neighborhood of 90%. It depends on the particular month. Lee can contest it and Lee does the stats for us every month. If we get just say 220 tips that came in, I'd say 190 of those tips are Baltimore City alone. And I heard earlier that somebody talking about some people just don't accept rewards. You know, we pay out a lot, or we approve a lot of rewards for drug tips that are coming in where arrests are made. And they're, for the most part, are the ones that don't claim the reward money. You know, I guess there's still a fear of the anonymity and, but also they, it could be just an elderly neighbor that is just seeing the activity going on and she just wants to do the right thing. You know, we still have people in this world today that want to report things that they see and don't worry about other issues. And this gives them another way to make a phone call and remain anonymous. Nobody's calling up at their house with a police car, et cetera, et cetera. So a lot of those tips that were coming in that Lee was mentioning before, where they just don't want the payment for it. Most of those, and through my past 17 years with Crime Stoppers, has always been the drug tips for the most part. Or you may have a family member that's just trying to get help for their son, their daughter, or niece, nephew, and so forth, and they don't reach out for the additional reward, or the reward money. But the key is, is in help, for us to help solve crime in Baltimore City and, you know, in anywhere, is having a program where everyone remains anonymous that are calling the tips in, being able to offer an cash incentive to give them that additional motivation to make that call and for us to be able to keep their anonymity, you know, as the most important part of it, as well as the solving of the crime. Once we get that information that comes on in through our hotline, it's automatically assigned to the police department that has that jurisdiction of that particular case. And then they have the responsibility to follow up with that particular case. And they report back to our board once a month in regards to if that tip did lead to an arrest and charge is filed. And if so, they write up the justification for it on everything that happened with the crime and what the tip information came in to be. And there's a point scale within the system that allows the up to $2,000 to be paid. Again, if it's a Baltimore City tip and it was a tip that came in that a gun was involved, there's an additional 2,000 from that Baltimore Gun Bounty. It's in existence that we still pay out for. And it's $500 for a working illegal functioning firearm. So if they recovered two of them, that could be $1,000. If they did three of them, it could be $1,500. And if the charges were filed on the suspect, it could be initial $500. So the bottom line is it capped out at 2,000. So that's why all the rewards in Baltimore City involving homicides with a gun or shootings with a gun, all resulted in up to $4,000. And that's the way we still advertise it.
All right, thank you very much, Earl. Chairman, back to you if there's any other questions from the Committee.
Thank you, colleagues.
Yeah, I have a question, Councilman, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I guess this is a great start, Councilman Schleifer, but my concern is just to Mr. Miller and Mr. Earl. Do you have the data to back up since y'all been in business for a while to show that the rewards that y'all giving out is really working in solving some of the murders or shootings in the city? One, is that? Two, when our governor, because when they had a murder in Southern Baptist Church, which is in my district, a lot of parents I know personally who kids were murdered were upset that, you know, they felt like their kids weren't important. And we know what happened at Southern Baptist was terrible and it was important too. So my pitch is to, I hope the governor, somebody from the office is listening, that he puts some money into this program also because there are a lot of unsolved murders in the city and a lot of parents felt like, you know, their kids are just as important also. But my concern is, do you have the data to show? But my concern is, do you have the data to show with the rewards that you're giving out that it actually resolved a lot of the murders here in the city? Not just with the cost of it's 2,000, 3,000, 5,000. I'd like to see maybe if you can give it to this committee, the last five years of the your program and how it resolved some of the murders or shootings here in Baltimore City. That's what I would like for, that can be a request, Chairman Costello for this committee. So we can look at that to see if it's really working. If it is, how do we enhance and make it a little better? And my last statement is until we address poverty in this city, we can talk about getting money for murders until we address poverty in this city, we're going to still have this conversation about increasing funding to solve murders in Baltimore City. So my request is, Chairman, can we get the last five years of their data to show that actually worked? On Metro Crime Stoppers, thank you.
Councilman Schleifer?
Yeah, so thank you, Chairman Stokes, for that for that question. I'll let Metro Crime Stoppers answer if they'd like to. One thing I want to point out, which was spoken about at the last hearing, this is one of those few cases that we ever have where we only pay on performance. And so it doesn't cost anything unless it's working. And so if crimes are not being solved by tips, then no money gets paid out. So whereas just about everything else we do, whether it's overtime spending or any other method to solve crime, we're paying that out, hoping it works. In this in this case, if the detective solved the case without tips, then nothing is paid out, it costs no money. So it's only being paid on performance and and I I would assume the data would show that certainly the the tips are relatively low in in Baltimore City because the the numbers are low. People don't even look at the program. It's it's actually, it's insulting to those families. I've I've heard from many families, the ones that gave me permission to forward. The emails have been submitted in in the packet for this bill and some of that testimony. But I I too heard the exact same thing you were hearing from families of other victims across the city calling, saying what an injustice it is that, you know, in one murder, there's, you know, $100,000 or 30,000 or 25,000. But in their loved ones murder, there's only 2,000 or only 4,000. And so that's what this bill is is aimed at solving. But Earl, did you want to weigh in a little bit on on some of that?
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Before you start, Earl, real quick, Chairman Costello, can can we put in a request for the, what I asked for? I'm not talking about the tip itself. I'm talking about the data to show even if it was 2,000, 3,000, what cases were resolved because of the the tips or that was resolved because of the money was there and somebody, you know, called in and say, I know something and they got they got the tip and that particular case was solved. That's what I would like to see.
All right, hang hang tight on that for one second, Councilman. Mr. Miller?
Yes, again, I'm the Secretary for Metro Crime Stoppers and I keep track of that data. We recently did provide the exact data that Councilman Stokes is asking for to the mayor's office. And I can certainly re pull that up and provide it to Councilman Stokes if he will send me his email. Secondly, you were talking about what works and probably the most successful program that we're aware of across the nation is probably run in Florida. And that's coordinated through their state's attorney's office. And they use just a blanket charge, I believe, on court cases, something like a dollar, $2 a case is assessed. It goes into the fund that the state's attorneys then pass out to the local region, Metro Crime Stoppers. It's a much more comprehensive program across the entire state. That's why they're so successful because they have increased funding. And the third thing, and this kind of refers to what Councilman Stokes has been asking. And Councilman, my response to is the people don't understand our program very well. One of our goals is to be able to advertise more about the the program, how you can provide tips anonymously and and convince people that it is safe. And we can do this through just better advertising and also through better media representation. And right now, we we kind of harbor our funds because if we had to spend $100,000 in a year, such as some of the places down in Florida do, we'd be out of money for time at all. And so frugal in spending our funds on anything other than reward expenses. We don't have any administrative expenses to speak of other than our insurance. And that's our biggest one right now. So I just wanted to kind of answer those questions. But if you'd send me his email, I would be happy to send him that report I sent to the mayor's office.
Thank you, Councilman Schleifer. If you could, if you could send Mr. Miller my email address and then I'll disseminate it to the committee, including Councilman Stokes.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll email email it right now.
Thank you. So Councilman Stokes, we got your request covered and we'll get that taken care of. Mr. Miller, can you get that to me before the end of the day today?
Pardon me?
Can you get that information to me by the end of the day today?
I'm not at my home right now, so I have to go home to to pull it up on my home computer. So it might be tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman, for that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I had a couple of questions from Mr. Miller. The, and I guess one for the police department. So for the program you mentioned, there has been in the past contributions towards the program, whether they were for direct rewards or other operations from Baltimore City. Is there any barrier from the city or other jurisdictions to expanding what they directly give to your operation? To increase rewards?
I'm not quite sure I understand your question. The only limit that we really have that's an administrative limit is that we do not want to get involved in payments greater than $10,000 for a single event to a single person. Because of the Patriot Act requirements of reporting to the Internal Revenue Service requires us to to have an identity and a social security number of who we're making the payment to. Currently, our payments are made with cash to a person that all we know them as is a tip number. And we can't be in violation of the Patriot Act, which is a federal law right now.
Yeah, so what I'm asking is, I'll make it more a little more simple. I probably worded that weirdly. Can the city just give more money directly to your program?
They they can, and we would advertise the their rewards, again, up to $10,000 we're willing to pay.
Okay. And do you receive funding support from other jurisdictions in Maryland? Like direct support for rewards or other operations?
No.
Okay.
I'm really self-funded right now. The only organization that is that has come forward with with potential programs is Baltimore City.
Okay, Mr. Chair, are we doing two? I have two more questions. That's okay.
Take it away.
Okay. The other question I had around, well, I've looked forward to the information that you you're going to send to us about the success of the program. And I guess I would add, does your data, do you track the percentage of cases that lead to an arrest without an award being accepted versus those that do? Essentially, is it the anonymity that drives people to want to report or is it the reward? And do you have data to show that it's either or?
No, I only track that data that comes in through our P3 program. Those are the tips. We do not track actual police success in solving crimes. We only track the tips that come in that lead to an arrest and indictment.
Okay, and the last question I had was, or for this round, rather, was are are people consulted about potential tax implications of accepting cash rewards?
Again, the answer is no. We don't know these people and these are cash rewards. They are within the amount of money that can be paid to people as as a gift as as far as the IRS is concerned. So there's no real tax implications of something less than $10,000.
And if Mr. Chair, I can just one quick follow up on that. So if the if there were rewards over $10,000, there they would lose the anonymity and there would be tax implications?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, that's all I had for this round, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I might have missed it, but when was the date that crime, that this Crime Stopper started in our city? Is there a date for start, the start date that this idea started?
I can answer that question. It was initially incorporated in 1984 in Baltimore City. It was primarily sponsored by major corporations such as BG&E and McCormick and companies such as that. Over the years, all those companies have dropped off the board except for Baltimore Gas and Electric. They're still a participant. And and the Bank of America is also a participant. Other than that, we've primarily all volunteer board. And as most of our records, a lot of them were lost in a flood in around 2000. So we have pretty good records going back to 2000. Before that, they were a little bit hit or miss.
Okay, I just want to mention, I don't know why every time I think of the crime, this Crime Stopper organization, I think of the problems that we had when the Dawson family, you know, the house was burned and retaliation. And I think I remember this, I guess I'd say, idea organization really started kicking off just to help in the solving of crimes because of the retaliation efforts. And that was one example. So I just wanted to kind of bring that awareness. And I I just view it more as just really trying to help the person that has seen or heard something doing during a, you know, problem to help it being resolved. It's, you know, it's a way to to really help to bring that person forward. And once they do that, are there any kind of, not just money, but are there any kind of protection things added to help that person that comes forward with information?
Ma'am, I can answer that. This is Earl Winterling again. We're giving them a cash reward of money, the incentive to come forward. Their anonymity is 100% protected across the board. There's, unless that person goes and tells somebody that he he made $1,000 from Crime Stoppers, he's not at risk in in any way. So there's no protection on it. The protection is the anonymity of that individual. And to your point with Dawson family, with the fire and stuff like that, we've seen how retaliation was working. And that's why programs like us have more success because of the anonymity. But it don't have the success that we want it to have. The success we want to have, we'd be solving every murder in Baltimore City or any type of crime that's occurring. That's not possible and it's just yet. Remember back several years ago, they had to stop snitching video that was released in Baltimore? And then Baltimore Police Department, Tony Moses and crew, they wound up coming back with a another video to actually go back and say, hey, look, these are the reasons why we need your help. And again, this is our city. This is a city we all love and cherish. We've had a lot of building, good progress within the city. And today, you know, it's at a point where we don't like it to be. And whatever we can do through Crime Stoppers to be able to get information to come in that we can funnel over to the police immediately and so forth, to give them that additional tool to be able to help solve that crime is what it's all about. But again, there's no additional protection on the person because Lee, myself, the police do not know who they are. You know, they're assigned a tip number and then that's the number they come up with. And we don't pay them through a bank like a lot of agencies do. We pay them directly in cash on some street corner somewhere. And it's a two-person control. So it'll be myself, Lee, or one of my our board of directors with a plainclothes detective that goes out and we meet this individual. This individual comes up to us and says, hey, because we'll tell we'll tell them what we look like and so forth. We'll wear Metro Crime Stoppers shirt, et cetera. And when that individual comes on up and say, I'm Tipster 629W1234, we hand them an envelope of cash and they walk away. We do a two-person control form from the police department, you know, the police officer. And I I do up as saying that we did pay out this amount of money to this tipster number. But, you know, as far as needing any additional protection, the only additional protection they're going to need is if if they are the ones that are actually telling people that they made that tip because we're not. And that's why we want to keep it as Lee's point is $10,000 or less through our program because we don't want to ever have that opportunity to have to pay out somebody and their name being disclosed.
Thank you for that additional clarification to both of you.
I have one other comment. The police always want to to contact the tipsters to gather additional information. A tip may lead them, but any tip that comes in, they have to investigate. They just can't assume that the tip is correct. We see some tips that look like somebody's got an axe to grind minds. And just by the way the tip reads. And so the the police do have to try to communicate. And the P3 program does allow them to communicate through the P3 system. Whereas the tipster can give, the policeman can send a question. If the tipster would log back in to see what's going on, that question then pops up and they can then answer it. And they can have this anonymous dialogue going to help the police solve the crime. Frequently, the police are able to convince a tipster to come into the police station to provide additional information. At that point, that that person's made the decision to give up their anonymity in meeting with a police officer. But that's beyond what our program is involved with. Our job is to get the tips in and get the police the leads.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Colleagues, any other questions? Seeing as there's none, Marguerite, do we have anyone on the line for public testimony?
I'm not sure, Mr. Chair, but if someone wanted to raise their hand to let us know that they want to testify and we have no call-ins. So can we give the attendees a moment to raise their hand?
We can do that.
Okay. Any attendee who wants to testify can either raise their hand or send me a quick chat to let us know you want to. Thank you. Any attendee who wants to testify can either raise their hand or send me a quick chat to let us know you want to. Thank you. No public testimony, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Uh, colleagues, is there a motion to move the bill favorably as amended?
I'd like to move the bill favorably as amended.
Thank you. Motion by Schleifer. Is it, is there a second?
Second, Councilman Stokes.
Second by Councilman Stokes. Uh, do roll call. Costello, yes? Schleifer?
Yes.
McPry?
No.
Matt?
No.
Middleton?
Yes.
Stokes?
Yes.
Dorsey?
No.
This bill passes four to three and moves to second reader at the next meeting of the city council. Uh, Marguerite, do we have anything else on the docket today? Marguerite? Marguerite? I should probably know this, but... Excellent. We are now in recess. Thank you, everyone.